Welcome, Ailey. The work session. There's my gavel. This work session of the Board of Education, February 28th, 2023, is called to order. Tonight is the first work session focused on the superintendent's proposed budget for the 2324 school year. This evening, we're going to focus on the preliminary budget planning and general fund outlook. Also, just so everyone knows, we will have a consent agenda, but I want to give, we've got, Director Konstant is going to be virtual tonight, and joining us shortly, Director DePass is going to be about 30 minutes late, and I believe Director Green will be joining us as well. So we're just going to hold the consent agenda for a little bit later in the meeting, probably at the end. Unless we're going to lose anybody early, I'm not sure. We'll do the consent agenda, so just to give everyone a chance to vote on it. And with that, I will turn it over, I believe, to CFO Delvedio.
At the superintendent's script if you want it. I could just read it for you.
Oh, he's right there.
There we go.
The script, I was about to read the script.
I was going to impersonate you personally. I was looking forward to it. I didn't have to ride a tire to do it.
I don't know.
I didn't have to ride a tire to do this, so. We're ready to go. Yep.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening, directors. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Tonight's another opportunity to receive an update as our budget development process is actively underway. We'll review some of the bigger factors and variables, some of these you've heard about. Our team continues to be in discussion around how these trends impact our funding. I think you've heard us say before, even just our revenue streams from the state continue to clarify as time goes by during the spring. So I know there's a lot of questions, as some of you have started studying the materials, I know you've already started forwarding those. You'll recall, as we have these budget-related conversations, we'll start keeping a log of those questions so that everyone can be clear. So we may not have, you know, full answers for you in every case this evening, but the team is certainly still working through what the implications are of our proposed budget. So I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, who's going to walk you through this evening's presentation, Noel Vertone.
Great, thank you, Superintendent, and rest assured, the law has been created. So thank you for sending questions, and we've begun answering them, and obviously welcome questions today as well as we go through the presentation. And really, just a high-level summary here, really focusing on the general fund. The budget is made up of several funds, five to be exact, but really the big focus is on our general fund that manages the day-to-day activities. And our preliminary outlook for next year indicates that a lot of the cost containment activities we've done this year, along with the recent state school fund estimate from ODE, show that our fund balance would be above 5%. And thinking about, in a minute, we'll show a little more detail what that means. And the context to that is that that's for next year, but we still have the following year to consider. So as we think about the big pieces of the budget, it'll be something for us to keep in the back of our mind, within the context that we've lost over 3,000 students since the pandemic, and we expect to lose another 500 next year. And when we think about a 40,000-plus student system, it may not sound a lot, but 500 is a whole pool. And so just think about the size of that, and it's definitely not something to take lightly. And at this point in our budget process, we're going to continue to focus on having a leaner budget for next year, but also continuing to prioritize high-quality teaching and learning. And just to share a few of the activities that we've done, from school staffing and central office actions, where we've frozen central office hiring, we still have to use central office funds. We're working to identify the minimal central office infrastructure for next year. And so there's still some ongoing conversations. When I think about the need to share detail, those are just still ongoing as we're working towards preparing next year's budget. And really thinking about how we're aligning classroom staffing with the student population, along with continuing our investments in high-quality professional development and center programming, all within, all while we're responding to school leader feedback, and ensuring that every elementary, middle school, and K-8 has a full-time instructional coach, and also working with a school improvement grant, so that school leaders can have a little more flexibility and work with their communities to make investments that fit their needs. That's the executive summary. I'll move on. We go on. Oh, well, I forget, I'm controlling. I have control here. Yes, go ahead.
The question on the central office freeze, so is that a freeze through the end of this fiscal year? And does it carry on, or do those positions unfreeze?
So it's a freeze for this current year. Some of those positions may remain frozen into next year, and that's part of the ongoing conversations right now. So it's a, it's a, it's a both. Where some roles may be unfrozen, other roles have been identified or are working towards identifying that they would not be in FY '24.
Just to be, just further clear clarity on this, because freezing sounds absolute. We have some essential positions in the organization we can't operate without. So, but what we are doing is evaluating each and every request, and so in most cases, those open positions are being paused for hire, while others, in some exceptional circumstances, are carried forward. We're still evaluating which of the ones are being paused, need to carry forward in the next budget.
And I just think that's a really important point. And I have actually stopped using the green freeze, because there is never a higher freeze. And honestly, hiring chill, I think, but it's a little bit more evocative of what we're actually doing, because we are slowing it down, but I don't want anyone to then go on and say, well, if you're freezing hiring, why are you advertising for this position? There are essential positions that can be hired, and I think that's important.
Right, which is really an important distinction, because it's confusing people. It's like, hey, it's like you're frozen, freezing things.
Then there's this open role that we're advertising.
So it's cold, getting cold.
What do you think, fund balance of 5%? What is that in dollars?
I'll get to that in a minute. It is about $39 million. So just kind of putting it into context enrollment, under which we're functioning, and this was spring data from Oregon Department of Education, just what we've seen across the state, and it's that continuing decline. And when we look at it within our context, this may look familiar from previous conversations. And so when we look at the green line, our actual enrollment, just dropped, precipitously dropped through just the pandemic. And we're all hopeful that would bounce back, which would be that blue line, but that didn't happen. So now we see that red line, which is where we are right now. And that red line continues to show a decline. And we work with the Population Resource Center at PSU, helps put together our projections. So when we look at demographics, birth rates, along with the level of transfers that may be coming in and our net enrollment out, all of those factors play a role into coming up with these projections. On our website, we do have our reports that show more in-depth detail into this. We won't have the latest one until June, but we leverage the information that PSU shares with us. We put it on our website, and there's some in-depth analysis of all the various factors that we take into account to come up with these projections.
So I have a question about the slide before, the Oregon one. There's like 35,000 fewer students in public schools. Are there actually 35,000 fewer students in Oregon? Or are there just 30, do we know whether some of that is leakage to private schools? Or is it fewer students in the state?
Yeah.
Do we know?
It's fewer students enrolled in Oregon schools. So there may be some small uptick in private independent parochial, but that's not where 35,000 students went. In most cases, they didn't go to our East County neighbors, for instance. They left the state.
Yeah, and what I was going to add to that, there was a report, a new analysis that just came out, you know, looking at the national level, that found about 230,000 students in 21 states just absent from, absent from the Rolodex. When you start looking at the, I spent some time looking at the analysis, Oregon doesn't capture the transition from a traditional school to a private school, so Oregon doesn't have that data readily available. So that's a vacuum that we have in terms of trying to really understand if, what number of students would, statewide, would have gone to a private school or another alternate option. But I can imagine these, you know, these researchers' analysis will continue, because a lot of folks are asking this question.
And so the loss is kind of a common trend amongst all Oregon districts.
There's not a superintendent I've spoken with that isn't experiencing an enrollment decline in this state.
And how much of that 500 is based on birth rate?
Yeah, so what we know is that the data moving forward is largely due to lack of in-migration and birth rate. So both of those are the attributes that you'll see over the next, you know, couple of years.
So the 500 loss we're predicting this year is less about kids leaving public school, but about the, like, those who graduate, there are fewer than coming into kinder.
Correct, according to our projections, yeah. And again, as Noel Vertone pointed out, you know, we're going to see, we see about 500, you know, estimates about 500 declining enrollment for the next, at least two years, three years, four years.
I would love for future, this isn't even this year, sort of thing, but as we continue to look at these demographic trends, having comparative data with our large suburban districts around us, and the reason why is because things like birth rate should be relatively consistent, and even in-migration into the state should be relatively consistent. But things like cost of living, housing affordability, general livability may differ. And I just, I think that would be, it's an interesting data point. I think everyone's declining, but if we're declining a little bit faster than surrounding jurisdictions, that might tell us something else that we could be talking to our city leaders about. So it would be one way to sort of parse out some of those.
And just kind of like a side effect of that rate of decline is part of the wait-and-see, to see how the rest of the districts are doing, because they'll impact the state school fund. And we can have estimates, but then we won't know for sure until the other districts submit their enrollment data and submit their information, then it gets compiled. And so those folks may be declining, but depending on the rate of decline, may impact us differently. So along with enrollment, some of the other budget considerations are the one-time federal COVID relief dollars. Those are phasing out. And those funds have been very helpful in mitigating disruptions over the past few years. But we don't anticipate the state school fund could make up these one-time federal dollars. So as these federal dollars go away, we'll have to reduce and adjust expenses. And all of this is preliminary as we continue to work through the process, our budget planning process. Just last week, we received our first estimates from the state. And while overall revenue estimates for next year show approximately 26 million more than this year in the general fund, operating costs are still increasing. And I'll show a graph right now, a chart that shows more information. But again, we're working towards April 25th. I want to start being able to share different pieces of information, because we know that a lot of it's going to depend on the final state school funding formula, what our enrollment numbers look like, and then the availability of the fund balance. I like to tell people, they always ask, what's the fund balance? Just think about it as our savings account. It's a default of unspent dollars from one year that carries over. So the more we do right now to help build up our fund balance, will play a critical role as well over the next few years.
So switching sides before you do, what are, what are the one-time federal COVID relief dollars that we have available this year? And what will we have available next year?
Yeah, so right now, we're anticipating, so the start of this year, we had approximately $75 million of ESAR relief dollars. And current projections were halfway through the year, and it's a very manual process with our software system. And we are anticipating to have between $20, $30 million available for next year. So it's spend-down rate of a little over 50% that would then allow us to, would then leave us with about $25 to $30 million of ESAR funding for FY '24, with a deadline, a spend-down rate, excuse me, spend, the technical term is an obligation period, September 2024. So when we think about the balance that we're left with at the end of this year, we have until September 2024.
Obligated.
Obligated, yep.
And we'll have on March 14th, the details of both our integrated grant, which includes Student Investment Account, Measure 98, and other state grants, so state investments. And we will be providing the board an update on how we intend, you know, propose the ESAR dollars.
And this is to district feedback, to not have to prepare individual plan reports, but to integrate these into one consolidated and comprehensive plan.
And so Superintendent, we can assume that in your budget proposal for this year, it will, you know, have an allocation proposed for every last one of those ESAR dollars since that spend-down date is September 24?
Like some colleagues who have had to return monies, we expect to spend every last dollar. But we did have a general plan for how to expend ESAR. So in most cases, those program elements will be looking at starting to scale down or taper off the level of service for the coming school year. But we feel like we have a solid integrated plan and no shortage of fees that we think, you know, that they're directed towards student services.
There's no shortage.
Thank you.
And with respect to SIA, Measure 98, ESAR, those are all funding streams that sit under the Special Revenue Fund. And to Jonathan's point, we'll be talking about that more in detail at our March 14th work session. For today's focus is really looking at the general fund. And the general fund's about $804 million of this current year's budget. And the primary source of, it's a primary source of dollars for day-to-day operations, which includes, and includes other funding sources such as a local option levy, the arts tax, and the fund balance. This year, the Special Revenue Fund was about $311 million. But then I think it's also important to note that although our budget is $1.9 billion, close to 41% of that is debt and capital projects, which are restricted to those type of services.
I'm sorry, what was the general fund dollar amount?
804 million. And that was our adopted budget, which includes the fund balance. And on the next slide, you'll notice that as we've, for this current year, year has progressed, our updated revenue is slightly lower, so 802 million. And our projected expenses for this year is approximately $729 million. And this is based on a lot of the activity we've been doing through February. And our current projection for our ending fund balance is $73 million. And this is as of February. And to put it into perspective, Dirk and Holland, you were asking, what's 5%? So when we think about our current revenue, 5% is about $40 million. Our board policy tells us 5% minimum, with the goal of getting to 10%, which would be about $80 million. Right now, that 73 accounts for about 9%. And to put it in perspective, at the start of the year, we started at 98.8, which is closer to 12%. So as the year's progressing, we're leveraging, we're benefiting from a lot of the activities that we've been doing and free, and the hiring chill, looking at areas where teams have volunteered, or we've also requested to reduce certain non-personnel expenditures, whether it's contracts or travel or whatever the case is. All of those efforts and activities are what's supporting this current projection. Because earlier in the year, on the next slide, this was.
Before you move on, this is also, I think, most districts, our profile is an enviable level of fund balance. Most districts are able to record a bump in their fund balance because of their federal monies haven't been entirely expended. So naturally, it's going to appear a little higher here. But we're in good shape, it's great for our bond ratings and everything else.
Yep, exactly. And our bond raters will appreciate that we are actively involved in managing the budget and taking into account activities, because back in January, we were looking essentially at projected expenditures of $773 million with a revenue of $772 million, which would essentially leave us with a minus one fund balance. Knowing that, again, our 5% target is based on our total revenue, we would have, we were on track to fall well short of that. And with the information I just shared, what we're looking at is that now that we have our first estimate from the Oregon Department of Education regarding the state school fund, it's not just for next year, but it's the biennium outlook. So what are we looking at over the next two years? Not just next year, but also fiscal year '25. And on the previous slide, it showed that we're on track to have an ending fund balance of $73 million. And so that's where, in the second column here, we have that $73 million carrying over, with projected revenue of approximately $730 million. And our total available revenue, $803, with projected expenditures at this point in time, as we're working toward, we're still working towards building out our budgets for next year with, you know, people don't like me when I say this, but it's the guardrails of trying to identify $20 million reductions as we assess. And.
So I just want to underline, that's not an easy exercise, so our appreciation to the team behind us, because they've made a lot of reductions they have preferred to not made or paused on some work, or perhaps not hired to date as a result. To give ourselves enough runway to see what we can capture now, or next year would be really painful all of a sudden. So even though you see that $73 million fund balance projected, we are still in our process of evaluating, where do we just cut to deeply? Where do, where do we, we need, this morning, our cabinet presented, do we have enough resources set aside to carry forth our strategic actions? We haven't put, we haven't allocated, in some cases, budget to make sure that that work can proceed. So that number will shift between now and my proposed budget to the board, but it gives you an idea of where we are today.
And it's important to note that it's not just this one-dimensional, hey, let's just cut $20 million. It really is thinking about, are we reassessing and repurposing? Because ESAR gave us the opportunity to also come up with new ideas, and whether it's a learning acceleration specialist or some other aspects of our work that were being funded by one-time dollars. We expanded our virtual scholar program during COVID, and that was with ESAR one-time funding. So it's, so now it's like having those hard conversations around what could, what could we repurpose, reassess, to create space in our general fund or in some of our other funding sources to continue these programs in some capacity. So these are some of the ongoing conversations that we're having, because there were some programs that were funded through one-time funding that teams have raised awareness around, like, you need to figure out how to keep this going. And so that's part of this, of this ongoing work. And that's just next year. And when we start looking at the following year, as we think about the state school fund as a biennium budget, what does the PPS biennium budget look like? And so just with preliminary information that we have right now, we'll see that as we continue into FY '25, so two years from now, the information we have here is without taking any action. So it does not take into account any sort of contemplative reductions or any sort of other reassessing, but it's just kind of following the revenue projection and the general, it's about 3.5% what our annual expense per raid increase is. And so when we put all of that together, we'll notice that we'll, again, be going through our savings account to keep day-to-day operations going, where in two years from now, our projected fund balance target would be $40 million, and we'd be closer to $21 million. And so I think it's important to note that for next year, we're on track to meet the minimum 5% balance target. There's still more work to be done. And when we think about being able to meet the 5% target in FY '25, that's meeting that 5% target. We haven't gotten into the conversation yet of what does it look like to start rebuilding back to 10%?
So I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, a couple of points I just want to really emphasize from that. I would be, I wouldn't say target, our target is 10%. Our minimum threshold is $40 million. And I just think that's important, because I think, you know, we're going to fall below the minimum threshold, assuming no other action, which is, of course, why we need to take action to not do that. So that's just one minor thing. I just want to, I know Superintendent, you already said it, but it's a really important point that what's happening up here with the numbers changing, some of it's the state school fund estimate, right? And, you know, if we can get that to 10.3 or 10.5, then these numbers change again. But others is the action that we've taken, and that's not easy to do. And I think sometimes the community, you know, they see these numbers changing, and they're like, see, you always have money at the end, not realizing that that money is there because of things that we've done. And really what this shows is you are actively managing, which is your job, thank you very much, of actively managing the budget throughout the year and saying, oh, wow, we're going to have a negative ending fund bound. That's not okay, so we're going to have to take some action. And then state, thank you for, you know, projecting to kick in another $300 million. So just the numbers change, they always change, that's a good thing. But the reason why the situation might look a little bit better now is not because we got the estimates wrong before, it's because we've taken action to make the situation better, to avoid what is still coming, right? And that's what we're going to be talking about for this.
Yep. And so then, just to add a little bit more detail regarding activities and actions that we've been doing this year, sweep of personnel underspend, close to $10 million. Reduce non-personnel expenditures, $4 million. So that goes back to working with teams where they've identified, yeah, this contract's not going to happen, or we're going to reduce our supply budget, or this PD isn't going to happen. The central office hiring till for the remainder of the year, it's estimated at $1 million. But we know that's ongoing work, because there are ongoing conversations. There's also those that then come back and say, you know what? On second thought, I need to have a conversation around why this is in a central role that we need to hire for. And so as we look at our preliminary savings for this current year, back to building up our fund balance, we're looking at $15 million to $20 million. And then there's all the activity for next year that we are continuing to have conversations. As the Superintendent mentioned, there are cabinet presentations this morning as we continue to work through assessing, because sometimes you can make cuts, but you might cut too deep and cut into the bone. So what does it look like to take a step back and reassess and repurpose when also you have other compelling initiatives that come across and trying to balance that? So that's, we anticipate over the next month to start filling out that box with a lot more detail as well, because I think it's also just prudent when we think about reductions for next year to also be clear as far as what, how many roles at school side versus central offices, different aspects of the work we do, to add some detail to that is on top of mine as we get over the next few weeks.
I have a question about the sweep, that is kind of like the earlier question asked. So the $10 million, wondering how many FTE that is? So last year, there was about 300 FTE added of the, so assuming, assuming not all those people got hired or there were other vacancies, but the, just the net of the 300, how, when do you pretty?
It's about a hundred.
It's about a hundred.
Yeah, and it's.
And then the follow-up question is, because I know this can be, I know there's permanent sweeps and there's temporary sweeps. And I'm wondering. And I'm wondering, is it, is it this strategic sweeping?
It's strategic sweeping, yeah, it, it is. Because it's, uh, we, we have a process in place where people can also bring back, like, you know what? Uh, actually, I'm going to need this fund because this new, uh, need surfaced. Um, we had a, uh, a recent request regarding, um, it was, um, I forget that CSA, I believe. Uh, and, and so it's like, how, like, there is this CSA need, uh, I forgot what that. I'm trying to avoid.
Campus safety agents or associates.
Yeah, so it's like, hey, we, we, we actually going to need this. Like, okay, well, let's, let's, uh, I don't want to say unfreeze because it never froze, right? It got chillous. Let's, 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 uh, go through this process. But, um, that's, that's part of the sweep is really looking at personnel is really an area that we know needs can change as a year progresses.
And some of it might just be a deliberate pause on a strand of work until the fall.
And so as we're going through planning over the next few weeks, some of the school-specific actions, we're aligning classroom staffing with student population. So the school staffing is in progress. Um, I, I, I just, you know, some of the questions that came in were with respect to class sizes. And so all of that is, is being worked on right now. And in addition to restructuring professional learning delivery, uh, that's in progress as well as part of the staffing activities as shifts happen from central office to, uh, school, school-based activities. Uh, we.
Do I expert that? Could you just say two more sentences about sort of this realignment of, uh, uh, academic leadership and capacity building towards, at the school level versus, you know, capacity.
Yeah, um, you know, part of, you know, looking at what was necessary to make specific adjustments while at the same time keeping an eye on our instructional priorities and the needs of schools. Uh, we, we were able to, uh, one example is revisit our instructional support and instructional coaching, uh, model. So that, uh, positions that were held in central office in terms of TOSSAs and such, we were able to, uh, revisit the model and ensure that every school was able to have an instructional coach uh, at the school site, which was, uh, very different from what the model looked like before. What it looked like was holding a number of, uh, positions centrally and then deploying out, uh, the support. So there were, you know, different persons, you know, uh, going to schools to provide support. Now we have, um, the, the, we have a designated, uh, role uh, in work, in the term of an instructional coach that will be hired centrally, um, you know, supported, but housed at the school, a part of the school commu- uh, community, yet receiving, uh, the training and development necessary for them to continue the work of, uh, ensuring that the curriculum adoption implementation is happening, that we are centering around our new instructional framework, and that there are other, uh, professional developments that are available in-house at the school site, um, supported and, and delivered by this individual, um, and again, a part of the school community to build better, um, better supports and, and movement towards our instructional priorities. In addition to that, we were able to then free up some additional, um, instructional staff back into the workforce, if you will, uh, that would end up being absorbed back into the school site versus, again, holding a number of positions.
So this is, uh, an exciting new feature for the coming school year. Uh, not only are we, uh, returning some folks at the school level, but we're guaranteeing every school will have an instructional coach. And so that gives school admin an added capacity to develop a very school-specific professional development calendar that meets where their data is showing, uh, supporting teacher practice. It can be there on a day-to-day basis over the shoulder and mentoring and supporting teachers. And so, you know, we'll keep the network to make sure that curriculum rollouts are still happening. But, uh, it's definitely going to give each of our schools that, that extra.
Yeah, and as a result of, um, looking at, you know, some of those one-time dollars that were, uh, available even for next year through ESAR, you know, we also looked at, um, the needs of our principals and some of the feedback that we heard from them, uh, through our work with ERS and some of the principal surveys. And principals wanted a little bit more autonomy, uh, over identifying, uh, school-level needs and addressing those needs themselves. So part of what we did was to create, um, that school improvement, uh, grant, one time, so that they can look at their school improvement plan, look at the priorities that they say, uh, that their school community needs and, and the priorities that would make the difference within their specific school communities. So that they can, um, you know, make some of those decisions and have, um, some funds with which they can, you know, operate, implement, and monitor, uh, progress.
So in prior work sessions, we've talked about these schools in the middle, not having had, either, either as a non-designated school don't have the benefit of extra FTE given our equity center approach in prior years, now they also have additional purchasing power. So now they can have a conversation with their school site council to say, where's our gap? What kind of further investment can we make at the school level to, to support the cause there? Sorry.
So just a question, this is for a layperson, um, to try and explain, um, something to, uh, school communities about what they'll, what they'll be getting. Um, so if you're in an elementary school, assuming an instructional coach is more like a utility infielder, so they'll be able to help in a number of different ways versus like maybe a TOSA would be a much more subject matter focus generally?
Um, both, yeah, it's, it really is a little bit more nuanced, uh, than just that. Um, but what we would say is that the instructional coach is, is really focused on the priorities of instructional practice, um, aligned to the instructional framework and aligned to the content that is provided to them through the curriculum adoptions.
This is being like a more of a content specialist.
Exactly, so, so it's, um, a, a person that would serve as an instrumental part of the instructional leadership team at the school site who can work with teachers, with directly with principal leaders, um, support classroom instruction, coach teachers, and, uh, the delivery of instruction and, uh, ensure that they are using, um, FTE-grounded practices to ensure that they're meeting the needs of every child.
Yeah, so we, we don't want this position to be perceived as, now you have an extra FTE, it's a utility player. Fill in the gaps, cover, uh, of course, I think with.
But they're more of a general, I mean, they've got more general assignments versus maybe a TOSA, which is like, you're doing.
One content area, right.
But it's all grounded in instruction and, and, um, academics. It's not like a school-wide to take on other roles.
We, we tried to be clear in our job description about what that role exactly need to look like at the school level. But yeah, they need to be more versatile in, uh, their expertise across content areas because there's one of them across grade levels in the school versus a centralized TOSA who may be secondary math.
And they have, you know, six different schools that they rotate to without, without the level of frequency and consistency that a school may particularly need to improve math instruction.
And there, will there still be centralized, um, content experts?
Not to.
But not, not to the degree, Dixon?
Enough just to network the coaches.
Yeah, and, and that would be through, uh, uh, program admin and, and like that, but not through instructional layer of staff.
So Dr. Dr. Proctor, this is, this is Amy. Um, first of all, I really appreciate this conversation about the instructional coaches. I think it's being warmly received and welcomed by our principals. I want to go back to the previous one about, um, adjusting classroom staffing with the student population. This is pretty easy to wrap our heads around when it comes to classroom teachers. Um, but can you provide a little more nuance about what that looks like for, uh, school-wide support? Supports, so including assistant principals, restorative justice specialists? I mean, we have a lot of other positions in our schools that are, to some degree, allocated based on, uh, school-wide enrollment. Can you, can you share a little more about that?
Yeah, we have it outlined in our, uh, core program, uh, manual that is provided, uh, to schools and, and we share transparently. Uh, when it comes to aligning, uh, classroom staff, we're really focusing on the, the instructional teacher, uh, staff. It's, it is, there is a formula for how it is that we staff for guidance counselors and other, uh, position as, as we work as a team, and I get those, uh, the formula in front of me.
For example.
Yeah, so looking specifically, for example, um, an assistant principal, uh, at a K-five, uh, school will provide that school-wide support K-five, but, uh, they would have to be at a particular threshold of student population.
And at this point, you expect those thresholds to be the same?
Correct, correct, so this threshold formula for the other positions will, will, um, will remain. Uh, we are looking specifically at the per pupil or the pupil, uh, enrollment to make the adjustment for, um, instructional staff and teachers based on, um, our class size, uh, our class staffing formula.
And some of these thresholds have improved in prior years. For example, additional APs was another focal area in prior budgets. So by maintaining them, we're ensuring we, we have that added admin capacity and bench, uh, frankly, uh, for school leadership.
And given what, what we're seeing and what we have seen and continue to see in some of the needs of our schools around climate um, and student support, we want to hold, uh, thresholds for the counselor, for, uh, you know, for a student behavioral support, uh, at the same, right? Because those levels of support is really based on, uh, who is in the building, the students' needs specifically, not necessarily the volume or, or size or population.
One, one thing I'm going to be looking for in this budget process, I appreciate what you're saying, um, Dr. Proctor, in terms of not going backwards on those thresholds, given, uh, some of our budget constraints right now. But I, I'm going to be looking at sort of the other side of the spectrum and, you know, where do we determine that a certain function is critical for the well-being of the students in a school, regardless of how many students there are and what the threshold of students to that, that person in that role is? Um, you know, versus, well, you're just, if you had ten more students, you would be allocated that. Because, um, you know, it's, uh, we've had that situation, um, with our assistant principals where it's just very difficult to get by, and there's some other, there's some other functions that way too. And now as we face having more elementary schools with considerably lower student populations, I think that's going to be a big question.
Yeah, uh, I agree with that, and we do, you know, while we do have, um, the, the formulas, the staffing formulas, um, in, in play, um, it also, when it comes to the set aside conversations, that's when we have those conversations, understand the dynamics and what's happening up in, in a particular school. So that if the school, for example, does not quite meet the threshold, um, maybe because of the intensity of, of the work that is needed at the school, we can offer a little flexibility.
And, and I'll, I'll just, think, thinking about our conversations last year and, um, a, a, a term we used a lot was stepping down and, and thinking about avoiding the fiscal cliff and, and thinking about what does a soft landing look like? Less about falling, but how are we landing? And, uh, maintaining the, the staffing ratios is an intentional investment. And, and, and thinking about, like, what does that look like for next year? Um, and not changing, uh, for example, the, the, the class size ratios or the AP ratios. But then also assessing against the overall landscape of, of the system as a whole because that eventually becomes a, a, a trade-off conversation. And, and assessing like, okay, what, where are the, how do we balance it? And, and if we maintain an investment in our staffing plan to look like X, right? What is the rest of the revenue? What is the rest of the expenditure like? Is that ultimately, that, the staffing plan is our biggest lever. It's, it's what we look at to, by intentionally maintaining it as is, that in itself is, uh, an investment decision of that, then requires other shifts in other places.
Potentially, you know, if schools do lose FTE and obviously parents will be upset seeing that drop, we can tell them, well, any FTE that you're losing is because you're losing that amount of students, like, impact students.
Yeah, that's, that, that, yeah, exactly. And, and, and thinking about the soft landing is also leveraging for this upcoming year is the usage of the mini-grants, so the mini ESAR grants where we want to give the school leader that flexibility to figure out, well, maybe I don't need an FTE uh, or, or don't need a, a teaching allocation, maybe it's an EA, or maybe it's working with an external partner. Uh, as, as we continue to figure out and work through what that soft landing looks like because there are less students, there are less resources. Uh, so that's part of the, the, the planning process.
Also, I really like the, um, the additional funds to give some flexibility around the instructional plans, um, instructional work, um, in the schools. I, I had sort of had a, um, affiliated question. In the PAT contract, um, there are thresholds which are different from our maximums. And if they're over a certain amount of, um, over a certain amount of threshold, PPS can either pay the teacher or provide an EA in some cases. And I think with the, the ESAR dollars, there will be, um, likely, um, some of that smoothing out or assisting some of those funds used to purchase EAs or, um, help alleviate. Is the, in the past, the district has had the practice of, um, paying the teacher? Is, is there any, like, reassessment of the, we might give EAs versus paying the teachers? I don't know if I could ask that question too.
From a planning perspective, continuing to, like, when I say plan, I'm thinking about the budget. Thinking about maintaining the whole rich practice, um, versus trying to meet certain thresholds. Uh, but I think the idea that the mini ESAR grant is going to alleviate and offset some of that, that's, that's what we're anticipating to see as well, and we, we're in progress. We don't know yet what the mixture, mix looks like from school leader perspective, what are they doing? Uh, but yeah, from a fiscal planning perspective is we're going to maintain that same practice.
Okay. How does the ESAR dollar look, what does it look like at the middle school level? So I could, I can envision at the elementary school level, the middle school where you have remote grades, where you have students moving all around. What, how do you think, um, middle school principals would use those?
I don't know yet.
I don't know that we can really answer that right now. It really is, it really is based on the leader, the school, and the identified needs for the school. And so we don't, um, you know, we, we are waiting, you know, we're going to hear back and, and continue to work with our school.
So they're submitting a plan central, and that will be collected, so you'll have visibility to, like, here's how, all the different.
Well, we want it to be a thoughtful conversation between principal and their supervisor to say, here's how I think we can invest this, uh, allocation to address, uh, focal students or, uh, uh, an opportunity gap. Some of the early things we're starting to hear is, particularly in the middle grades, is given what we've been observing, uh, across, uh, the district, you know, some principals are starting to ask, well, how could you use some of this money to launch an affinity group? Our school doesn't have a BSU. Uh, maybe there's a partner out there that could come out here one afternoon a week, you know? So they're starting to think creatively around, what are some ways that I could address some of those climate culture needs as well as some of our academic interventions and structure? So that's exactly the kind of conversation we want them to have with their school site councils, their ILTs, their teacher leaders. And, and we didn't want to put a lot of constraint on it because we think, you know, our principals will benefit from the ability to be creative as long as they can tie it to their school improvement goals.
And, and, you know, be able to, uh, speak to their progress to. And and, you know, be able to speak to their progress towards their goals on a quarterly basis with senior leadership.
We did have, during the staffing process, we went through, school staffing was part of the post round, excuse me, had conversations with school leaders about how they are putting together their funding streams to to do the core work. So we have an, you know, initial preliminary preliminary sort of rounds of discussions that have started. And some of what you're hearing is, is, is it, are the funds going to be used to do things to address specific things like affinity groups? Are they going to be some, for the middle schools in particular, talking about interventions, right? And looking at math and reading interventions? And are there spaces that we can do? And when I say intervention, I really am going to put it to acceleration, right? Like, what are the opportunities for very intentional supports to address learning needs within the school day to accelerate learning? So it's a combination of pieces. I think that that what was appreciated in the conversations we went through staffing was that it was enough to allow people to 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 think creatively and to think through, how can I create a package? That is, you know, the staffing itself is lumpy, right? And then this provided more of the, what I described, like the rounding, the smoothing out of things to get to get the pieces in place. And then again, with the middle school staffing formula changing to more like a high school staffing process, that this combination of that staffing model with the mini grants allowed principals to say, okay, I'm I'm close on getting this to fit and this allowed that, whatever it was to fit. They could, they could just make it that pieces fit a little more smoothly.
And I think they'll just round out the conversation here, the answer. One of the highlights of this year, your incredible leadership of the ISC team is that we have, we've started these quarterly or quarterly reviews of the school improvement plans. So we have central office figures joining other principals and sending to their colleagues, talk about the work and improvement to date, right? And so I think speaks to again how these aren't just plans, they're going to be sitting there and, you know, looked at once a year, they're going to be active. And we're going to be, feedback, right? And we're going to be providing real time feedback. And so we'll we'll be able to monitor, you know, in real time, these these dollars.
It's the academic showcases, right? And and thinking about how feedback, but also like, what are the, what are the needs that are coming back? So like this two way streak as we start thinking about the shifts and to Dr. Proctor's on your point about listening to feedback, what are the things we can start shifting right now? And and putting pieces in place as we, you know, as a fair to continuous improvement, what are the things we're doing? And so I I think that, you know, just thinking about next steps, really, the teams are currently working through central office reductions. The goal for next year is that 15 million, 20 million dollar target with non-school site budgets carrying the majority of the reductions, that's like the goal, that's what we're focusing on. We'll have more as we continue over the next few weeks, leading up to, or or just to say, ESSER is going to continue to mitigate and and work as we work towards that soft landing. We just received our first funding estimate from ODE and and they were also very clear, this is preliminary, right? Because there's still so much work to be done over the next few weeks as the legislature continues their process. So we anticipate additional iterations over the next few weeks. And then at the March 14th work session with CBRC, we're going to be focusing on special revenue fund. So SIA, Measure 98, ESSER, where we are, provide an update on that. And then at the March 21st work session, we'll do a joint session with ERS as we look at broader system level conditions. So as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, like, what are then the big pieces we're putting in place as we think about the, our strategic plan and and people, time and money to make it happen? And also provide additional budget update, kind of bringing it all together. By then, we also would have continued to answer questions and be able to share like the preliminary snapshot to what April 25th is is going to look like.
So, from the last slide before the online learning academy?
Yes.
So it has a savings of, or was funded at 5.3. How much of that was were high school students who are who are going to be shifting over to virtual scholars?
I do not know that.
The number of high, say, the number of high school students that are in the online learning academy right now?
That would be shifting to virtual scholars.
So virtual scholars is within a school day, it's one period of learning in the day, so it's, they're not commensurate, I guess is what I would say. So it's not like they're going to move from online learning academy to virtual scholars. Virtual scholars is it's an online process that is within the school day district wide as opposed to, you know, a class in and of itself. So there's, that is, there won't be a shift in that in that way from online learning academy to virtual scholars, they're the same.
So all students who transition from the online learning academy, if they were in a PPS, would be transitioning to an a in-person school, primarily an in-person school experience?
Yeah, I mean, essentially. And I think what we're, what we're working with families to do is to say, you know, here, we're looking at at where they were prior, if they were in the system prior. And then also trying to work individually, family by family, student by student, helping the best sort of their needs and and adjust from there. And we're looking at, you know, in elementaries, our portfolio of options looks slightly different than middle schools and high schools. So it's really working with families one on one to to address, you know, what their needs are and to connect them.
They still wanted a virtual experience, it's not in PPS.
Correct.
How many families, sorry, how many families are certified the online learning academy as of now?
Right now, it's 230, I kind of, I mean, it's about 230, 238, 240 students.
So I was actually going to, going to comment on that as well, because I just wanted to make sure that the point wasn't lost. So we've been funding online learning academy with federal ESSER dollars, which are by definition one time and which are handy. So, because I know all of us have heard a lot from the families that are in there and and some really meaningful impactful stories about how it's helped their particular student. But again, we were able to add that because federal dollars came in. In order to continue that, we would need to be taking dollars from elsewhere in the PPS budget in order to continue funding something that was not being provided pre-covid.
That's true. The intent of ESSER, giving districts the opportunity to create programming to support students post pandemic. For us, it was making sure that this option was available for students and families who needed a health and safety related option. And we've been able to sort of launch it very quickly. I think people, you know, no one would argue that it hasn't been of a benefit to our students. Some have even found it to be a preferred model, but of course, maintaining an online learning academy comes at a cost. It would have to be a trade off to maintain it. So it was really ESSER dollars that allowed us to operate it.
Yeah, and I just think that's, I think it's an important point to the community. We're not taking away online learning academy because we want to. We're not taking it away because we don't think it was beneficial for those families. It it's a budget related decision and it's a trade off, you know, sort of, sort of conversation about where else that money would come. You also had provided a couple of work sessions ago on per student funding.
Like, yeah, so if you took that 5.3 million and divided it, you know, just roughly by the 230, you know, students, you get over 20, 22,000 spend per student where in our schools, we're funding per student at a significantly lower rate. And, you know, again, it was a program that was set up and put in place as we were doing our return to face to face learning post pandemic and giving, again, options for families who were not quite comfortable going back in face to face. And that was the intention and that's why it was funded through ESSER dollars. Revisiting our budget, you know, you know, picture, we had to look at where we are making, getting returns on investments, where we are excessively spending per student and what we're able to maintain or sustain.
Do we have any services available for families that are going to transition their their children back into in-person learning? That can sort of help with that transition, ease whatever those anxieties, those fears, work with those families?
That's what those individual personalized conversations are about with families as they're looking at transitioning their students back into another PPS program option. And we're going to try to make the best fit for the student and also ensure that there, we're partnering with our student support services to ensure that there is an entry or a transition that is smooth and paced in a way that supports the student long term.
If we get any emails from folks, where should we direct them for those services?
We've got Jay Bruno. If you're getting emails regarding students who just have a a social emotional need around returning back to school, he's actually at the student support services. Margaret, Margaret Calvert, who has been really instrumental with her team with the multiple pathways program and also worked closely with and oversaw the online learning academy is leading those individual conversations with families, with their options.
I have a question about that as well. Do we have an idea of those 230 families? How many of those might go elsewhere outside of the, outside of our district? Is that, are those families included in the projection that was shared?
Yes.
The presentation, rather, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the projections, they are.
Percentage of?
Because we are planning for them, we are planning and budgeting as if they are returning to our school so that we are, you know, funding them. And then Margaret could answer the other part of the question.
We're, we're, we're in process, Director DePass, in some of the conversations with families. What I would say is that we are engaging families and we have actually two family outreach meetings tomorrow. One in the middle, one about midday and then one in the evening to talk through options and how to support connections. What I, I think what I would say is that people are trying to process information and make informed decisions. And so we're trying to give as much information in a way that is respectful of people's processing time and thinking about how we can support the mission that some people are ready to make that decision now, other families are still thinking through their options. So we want to be able to provide that information in a timely and ongoing way so that they can enter those decisions.
Thank you.
So let's just open it up. We've got some time for general questions. Icetia Hollins, you sent some really great questions, but you know, I don't know if you want to repeat any of those. I don't know if you want to go over.
Yeah. Yeah, I sent a lot of questions in, so.
You have your response.
Yeah, so I'll wait for those to come back. I did have a couple of questions and relating to the budget piece. So I'm going to, I'm going to start back from there. Well, like, so when we talk about a savings of 5.2, is that a net savings? Calculating the money we're going to have to spend whether in in-person class or is that overall amounts?
Well, I think it's, it's thinking about, it's it's one time funding. So technically, it's not a real life savings because we haven't moved it to the general fund and it it's, it's it's.
So, I can ask it differently. So what is the cost for us for these 230 students?
Yeah, I, maybe I could take a second there, because if I was looking at the heat map here, and this is what Dr. Proctor was saying. At brick and mortar, we're seeing cost per student is, you know, depending on the school, obviously, and the Yeah, you're looking at, you know, some majority schools between the 7,000 and 9,000 per student range. And again, as Dr. Proctor outlined, 23,000 per student on OLA. So you're essentially paying two to one compared to a brick and mortar. And part, and part of it is, as you can imagine, is, we talked about it, we talked about staffing allocations. It's the ratios, right? So, you know, when you have smaller, you know, you're looking at half, maybe a dozen, you know, first graders in OLA versus, you know, you can have, you know, more than, you know, 30, 40 kids in one classroom. So the scale, sorry, 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 sorry. In a school, sorry, in a school, in a school, in a school, in a school, that's what I meant. Thank you for catching that. See the ratio or, you know, the difference there.
Yeah.
Okay, so just going by what you just said, so even though there was one time funding of 5.2 for the overall program, it's still going to cost us about 1.8 even by them being in class. So that's still going to be additional cost for bringing them in class because we won't have the ESSER dollars. So.
Can I just, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask for staff, but it depends on the school.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying average, yeah, I'm not saying.
There may not be.
Yeah, there may not be a cost.
Those 200 some students were spread across 12 grade levels. And if one goes here, one goes there, it may be under our already allocated staffing allocation. We've already staffed the school, there's room and seats, so there may not actually be an additional cost.
So we're bringing in 200 additional students and you said it's not going to cost us?
Here's an example. So if I'm a third grade student in Ola and I go back to my neighborhood school, a third grade, and the class only has 21 students, I'm going to be able to be the 22nd student. We're not adding an additional teacher or additional services for for that one specific student. So the cost kind of becomes part of the equation that curbs staff.
I get that for, I get that for kind of class sizes that are below our thresholds, right? But we have classes that are at our thresholds, but we're looking at this budget cycle of, you know, right sizing our staffing models. How do we address those costs if we get outside of those thresholds?
So.
With those additional students.
Into, Director DePass asked, like, thinking about her question as well. The enrollment team, the staffing enrollment team, Dr. Adams' team, took that into account. They took it that into account in producing the allocations for school size. So it's already baked in. It's already accounted for in that. Now, in in the circumstance that it just enrollment exceeds whatever threshold requires an allocation, then that's also, if it's more enrollment than what we anticipated and budgeted for, it would be offset by the state's goal fund because then it's always like, oh, we do have more students. So here's.
Generating more dollars per student.
Exactly, yeah.
So I mean, that's a good question, Director Hollins, about the increment, like, what? Is it one student or five students or is that determined by classroom, you know, at that unit level or?
And and it's going to vary depending on school. So it's going to come back to how we look at the staffing formula. So whether.
For the whole school?
Whether it's happening at, or for example, in elementary schools, it's by grade bands. So depending on grade bands. Middle school, it's the whole school, high school, it's the whole school. So it's going to vary. But the team, based on the demographics of the existing students at OLA, then put it into the formulas to account for that extra student count.
So my other question about the OLA. Now, I know we talked about soft landing for us, you know, as a budget. But how the budget pending is potential budget shortcuts we have. On this period, did we think about doing a soft landing for OLA, maybe not having so many staff? Or however that soft landing could be for OLA?
So there were several conversations and and I think that the biggest question was respect to the way the model's designed. It's not necessarily, and I know Margaret, Dr. Proctor could talk to it better, but it it it's not necessarily like a traditional brick and mortar school where you can just remove one teacher and then consolidate their. But I think that that was part of the considerations to how the 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 model's designed to be able to say, okay, well, do we just look at this grade or that grade, but then we're left with instead of 5.3, it's it's $5 million or like the economies of scale didn't play out. But I, there's additional.
So we, we had conversations, we looked at, you know, various options, but this was the most as difficult as it just been was. It was the best option that we could have. In order to meet the needs based on our budget, you know, profile and also to come to. to come to an alternative plan of support for families as we had to, you know, eliminate the problem.
Now, you mentioned the ROI for the OLA program. Where, with this program, how would this test score, did you see increase, decrease, or kind of stay the same with our test?
It was inconclusive. It was, you know, for some students, and that's one of the things that we were coming out of the pandemic is that there were a number of students who just did not do well on the, you know, online learning type of a platform. There are some that do thrive, but the student data results benchmarks were not conclusive to the overall that this program was, was successful in that part.
Next, so the, we're done with that. The, does the budget, the budget we're going for now, do it count for the potential adjustments in contract negotiations?
It, it does. And we have our, so it, it contemplates that. And I think that as conversations continue, that's part of like, we would then come back to the board if we were, I think in a situation where we weren't within range, or we would then have to have additional reassessments of the budget.
And then my last question. You talked about, I think what slide it was, the central office saved around 10 to 20 million dollars. And you also mentioned as far as the model of moving folks from the office to the school site. Are those savings within that?
Yeah, so it's, it's the shifting, like, for example, with the instructional coaches. So moving from a centralized or decentralized model and kind of creating that model, that's all inclusive, like the net effect.
So we captured that in the move for our, our savings at the digital, that add additional expense on school.
It's, I know, it's not, it's not, that's not how we would perceive or calculate it. So it's, when we, we're looking at for next year's calculations, we will look at just the net effect of like the reductions that happened at the central office. So it's like, okay, well, when we're reassessing management and business functions, this was the amount that was saved.
Well, no, yeah, I get that. If you have one department, if you have one person, if you repurpose, repurpose them over at this department. Oh, yeah, it shows a reduction here, but then it's gonna show up how over here.
So like, that's 10 to 15 million, it's the net. So it, it, it would, it would show essentially not just that shift, but it would show just the overall, like, net savings. Because, for example, at the school site, if we looked at the school sites, we produce volume two as an example. And our budget volume two shows like the individual school profiles and shows, okay, so many FTEs, this is the funding. That school site will show the net result of like if this instructional coach sits on their balance sheet, you know, as an example, P and L. But also this aligning to, aligning students to staffing would also be incorporated into that. So that would then just show the net result. So if, if there was one instructional coach added, but let's say two teachers were reduced, then the net would be one that would show in that. And we would roll all that up to help show, okay, well, this is a school site effect, this looks happen in central office and we could carve that out as well.
I'd say, I think, you know, just, just to know, I mean, I think it's important to know, I think this is the struggle that we're often in, in as a, as a central office, right? Because, and you hear it all the time, right? Spend all your money, all your resources in the schools, which is our, you know, we are attempting to do that, right? So we are trying to create the most minimal central office infrastructure possible. And so what you'll hear on 21st with ERS is, you know, some information that we've gathered from their analysis is help, is helping us determine and make these decisions accordingly. So while we, you know, and, and, and to your point, yes, absolutely. We're moving, you know, central office dollars away from the central office into schools so that they live there. You know, versus, in many cases, they live here, but worked at schools, we're just trying to earmark them directly to the school.
Right, I, I get that. I guess if I look at an overall budget, I'm not caring wherever you set the dollars at.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the overall. Right, where's the real-life savings? You know, if I move, you know, from our administration office over here and put it into trucks, well, I'm still having that expense. And so that's why we're trying.
Yeah, it would account for that. So like ultimately, we start talking about next year's budget, there would be real-life savings across that that we would bring to the table as part of balancing the budget.
I mean, the 10 to 15 is actually 10 to 15.
Correct.
All right, I was, I was actually gonna hold this question, but I think it's, I think it's, it's not a question, it's a, it's a comment. And y'all are gonna be so tired of me saying this as we go through this budget season, but I'm gonna say it every time we get together. I'm gonna continue to ask you about the impact of these central service reductions as we go through this process. And I just want to remind the three people, I think, who are still listening on. One of the, the, some of the, some of, almost all of the most dominant complaints we, we get from the public and people who come testify at our board meetings, it is about central office and it's frankly about an under-resourced central office. When we talk about hiring.
Staff.
We talk about retention of staff, we talk about staff development, professional development, we talk about organizational culture. Those are all HR things that are happening under Sharon. When we talk about how we manage our finances and what information we're providing to the board and the public about our finances, that's Chief Doug Adio and his team doing those things. And we hear complaints about our communications with schools, with parents, with the media, with the community. When we hear about outreach and engagement, those are all central office expenses, you know, in, in a couple different places, under Freddie, under Jonathan. And, you know, when IT is, is massive now in any school district and that's all run by Don. And I just want, I want to continue to reiterate that the complaints we get, a huge number of them are about those central office services. And, and, and my hypothesis, I'm pretty sure I'm right about this, is that it's because we've under-resourced that, not just in your tenure, but for decades in this district. So when we talk about, it sounds really good and politically it sounds great to say, I'm gonna put money in the classroom and take it from here. Those classrooms cannot be successful without HR, finance, comms, IT, and all the other central services. So I'm gonna continue to ask, and I want to make sure that as a board, if either superintendent, if you put forward a budget that cuts dramatically or if we as a board want to cut dramatically, I want to talk about the service. Then I want us to own up to the public when they say, you didn't communicate well, it's because we cut that service. You didn't hire well, it's because we cut that service. So there's a trade-off for any one of those things.
Yeah, I, I won't do anything but agree with that point. If you're, if you're staffing your central office functions at a minimal level, you can't expect maximum level of service, of comprehensive service. And so we are left with a much diminished bandwidth to do other work, right? Other things that come up unless the strands of work that are essential parts of our strategic plan get paused or slowed down or, you know, the energy, the bandwidth that exists gets distracted and off-focus. So, yeah, there, there's a trade-off in whether it's customer service or it's responsiveness or all those things. That's why we're going through this exercise as a team around, you know, as things get a little clearer, what would we prioritize, you know, to, to not go too deep in that it's, we start to suffer as an organization in our responsiveness and the rest.
And if I, if I may, I mean, I, I want to bring in a national lens to this because there was a recent financial analysis that was done. And if public education completely eliminated central office administration, that would translate to about $150 per month in teacher take-home pay. In exchange, teachers and school-based leaders will have to pick up the task of managing payroll, accounting, budgeting, human capital, urgency, enrollment, curriculum, and the list goes on, right? But again, the point here is this dichotomy, this, this black and white, or yes or no, central office or no, I think you're highly on point.
Okay, I have more questions, I'll come back.
I'm good for now, thanks. Excuse me, sorry. I also just wanted to comment on that too, and I think that during the public engagement process, like as we start that in this budget season, it's also really important to communicate that because I think if you give people a list of items, like you were saying, like, what do you want? You want more IT support, you want more communications. And then understanding to the public that those things are like jobs that the central office does. Because definitely talking to students, obviously, like, they bring up this concern about there being a lack of support on the school-based staffing side of things. But ultimately, I think there is a lack of understanding from most families and most students that central office does a lot of these very critical things that we do get so many complaints about. And so I think definitely as a board, and obviously, like, yes, not a ton of people like watch our public meetings, but also just like in terms of how we communicate with students, and obviously, that's something that I do a lot, is that trying to make sure that they understand that, like, we can give you all these things that the central office does. And if you want to prioritize those things, then you need to understand that we're prioritizing central office budget. And I was gonna say that definitely something that I'll be in favor of is I think making sure that we have a strong base in communication is like definitely where I feel like we get the most feedback. And I think if teachers felt more supported than, and we had like this more, this better communication, then I feel like we could deal with these problems of less school-based staff more easily. Okay, sorry. I think with my other questions, I can probably send them in. My only one question was the $10 million sweep, was that also including, like, school-based budgets and positions? Or was that purely just?
Central. That was central.
Okay.
Central office, yeah, yeah.
And do we have any understanding of whether there's like vacancies within school-based? Like whether we're missing FTEs or like, and that's maybe why teachers are feeling more friction?
There are vacancies at, at school sites and part of our focus right now was really from a fiscal perspective was like thinking about, what do we sweep here at central office? But then also understanding that as we sweep across the system, inclusive of vacancy savings or vacancy savings as a result of vacancies at school sites, being aware that some of that might have to go back, back to strategic sweeping and thinking about that. I don't have any numbers specific to vacancies at school sites or anything to share. At the end of the day, it, it was looking, that 10 million is looking at central office, but then also thinking about, we know that there's additional funding or additional vacancies across the system that we're, we're gonna be continuing to assess and work with as the year progresses.
I think we can give a, a quick status update.
Yeah, we track our school-based vacancies in the circle areas. And I have for as of this week, 91 positions. That's not a T, that maybe it might be 0.5 and 0.5, right, would each be one. So that's 91 positions that are currently not filled, so it's a little more than one.
And I think we're in the single digits now for custodial vacancies, so we're almost there.
I think it's nine, actually.
Nine.
Wow, single digits.
Director Brenner?
So, micro, is there a macro staffing questions? So last year, when the staffing got rolled out with the enrollment numbers, there was, I think the initial was like 132 positions that staffed that would be unassigned. And I heard it's over 200 this year, is that correct?
Yeah, there, I don't remember what the assignment was last year and also that's a moment in time, right? It will change.
Yeah, it went to 132, I think to 89 eventually. So is it?
Well, no, everybody got assigned eventually, so it got down to zero.
Right.
Yeah.
But positions taken, I, look, positions taken out of schools, I think was the number. Went from 130 to 89 was the final number. And all those people, eventually, it's not, nobody got laid off, but they got assigned somewhere else, so.
I think you're, I think, Director Brenner, I think you're talking about the reduction in classrooms allocation of FTE for classroom was right around, at one point in time was 87 and then was set aside, I don't know what, you know.
Imagine about last year, I guess I'm looking for this year's numbers. What, if we take the enrollment we, we have and you take the staffing formulas, we, we obviously will have less because if we have, like, we're projecting 500 students. So how many, how many teachers would be coming out of classrooms?
How many fewer classrooms will there be? That is actually a Dr. Adams question, I'm not sure if you know that.
And I, I do not, that's in progress. Because we also know that the, the Esser mini-grants are probably going to play a role in how that ends up balancing out. But that's, that's ongoing work and so our, our goal is to be, as we work over the, I want to say two weeks, I think that's March 14th. And March is here. And so as, as we work towards that would be to have some information ready by then.
I have a follow-up on that though, because Julia started talking about the unassigned. What I had heard is that with the predictions we're having, we don't think we'll have to pink slip or lay off any teachers. Again, we don't know for sure, but given our plan and retirements and what we're expect, projecting, at this point, we won't. Teachers won't lose their job, they may have to change jobs.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying layoffs, I was just unassigned, because.
Yeah.
I think the school feels that there's one less person, that doesn't mean that somebody's been laid off, it means they're somewhere else.
So Sharon, is that, I just want to verify that rumor that I've heard that we're projecting that there won't be layoffs, we don't know yet, or do you know?
I am very hesitant to make those projections. But it, it does not look like.
It's hard to tell and I know it's a very nuanced thing, it's based on previous trends.
Yeah, based on previous trends, trends, the number of assignments.
Thank you, Dr.
We project in our prior trends.
So March is March 14th, that's the day that the Esser funds have to be decided. And then there'll be a little bit of a, like a shakeout and it'll be, okay, here's where.
March 14th will have an update on Esser. However, the funds that do need to shake out are, are integrated grant funds, which are SIA, Measure 98, CTE, and a few others. So that's when we want to have as, as buttoned up as possible our integrated, our integrated grants, like, it's such a complicated acronym, but yes.
So, no.
Yeah, is it, is it related, Director Costin?
Preferably, but go ahead with this train of thought if we weren't finished with this.
We'll come to you for questions in a second, but if it was related to that, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna ask two of the staffing questions. So, and this may be for Dr. Adams, about the staffing of the focus schools that had been able to staff at at their, at a school-selected rate versus like the staffing, the maximum staffing ratios. And I'm wondering how that was addressed this year.
It's a Dr. Adams question.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch the question.
So remember last year where schools that can sort of set their enrollment because they.
The focus option and.
Yeah, exactly, in the DLI programs.
He's offered a response on this topic, but I think when the team looked at making sure we equalize enrollments despite program, you know, you have to do that over time, particularly like with the LIs, they have to happen in the early grades, for instance. So where there was space to do that, I think there was, you know, a beginning to do that. But we'll make sure that we capture the question in our log.
And I will note that on the 21st with, when ERS is here, you'll see some analysis that does a comparison of our traditional classrooms versus our DLI. You'll see that there isn't much of a discrepancy in district-wide.
Yeah, so it's DLI, but also the focus programs. And then the, last year, sort of the end of the budget cycle, the board, working with staff, put, I think, 10 to 12 RBS, racial equity and social justice coordinators into the schools and.
RBSJ or restorative justice practice? RJ.
RJ, sorry, yes.
RJ or RJ? There's two, yes, yeah.
Well, they could do some similar work.
So, I, I can't remember, because I think Director Hollins at one point was trying to get it changed to be, it wasn't Esser money, it was like in the, the budget. Is it contemplated that, I know last year was like, it was very targeted to those middle schools and yet it seems like it may be something that all of our middle schools need? I'm just curious, is, is that built into the new staffing?
So we enjoyed to look at all of the entire profile of the budget. There, you know, frankly, was a, a category that we looked at that was called last-minute board ads.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna own that right there, Josh, you're stuck there. I'm gonna own that.
So we had to, we really had to take incisiveness. So answer your question in the short is yes, we are going to continue to provide the supports um, through student services, uh, for the students at most need. Um, and then there were some trade-off conversations as well.
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying, I think the decision to maintain them, but back to the earlier comment around having to dig a little deeper.
That's where we had to.
To purpose reassess, to say like, yeah, this is something we want to continue. Let's keep it on the jump.
But, Dr. Proctor, this is full circle, back to the conversation that we had before where, yes, I appreciate that the, you're gonna, we're gonna hold the thresholds and not get any worse, but this is a perfect example and, you know, I will own the fact that I tried to fall on my sword at the very end of the budget process last year to have those restorative justice specialists in every single one of our middle schools. It didn't work out that way, but this is a perfect example regardless of enrollment. I think we should be considering whether or not that is simply a critical function for every middle school. And I, I will tell you that my heart really bleeds for the West Sylvan principal who has begged at the very top of her list last year and throughout this entire year for staffing for restorative justice and climate specialists and didn't have that staffing and, you know, recognized how deep the need was in the building. So I'm gonna really, this, this conversation's coming full, full circle right here and there are some things that we need to ask ourselves, is this simply an essential function in the school? And if so, how are we going to figure out to make it available at every school regardless of the enrollment?
Director Brenner, is there any other questions?
I just want to make sure I understood the answer because it sounded like it's going to be targeted again versus everywhere.
Yes, so because we're in, like, we have to take the budget process in phases and in looking at the reality of our, uh, current budget and with, um, shortfalls and deep cuts that we, and reductions that we have to make. Okay. So, um, you know, we have to, again, make those decisions in phases. Uh, we did make the first phase of decision, which was to maintain the current level. Um, listen, I think it's really important as an educational body that we ground our decision-making based on data and evidence and need. And we will do our best to make sure that every, every school, um, that has a grounding of evidence that says that there is a deep need, we will, we will try to expand where we can. But we do have to take the budget process in phases. I don't know that it's, and, and listen, um, you know, we are at the will of the board, but I don't know that it's, it's wise or, or within the process to say blanketedly that, you know, I'm gonna, you know, spend on this, on this area and not really right size and look at what the trade-offs of that would be.
My last question is around summertime warning. Um, it said, looked in here, it seemed like it was going to be a reduction from 15 million to 8 million. I know last year we had an unprecedented number of both academic acceleration and enrichments and, and we had thousands of students participating, it was amazing. Um, but we didn't have quite as many students as we thought we would. I mean, it was an amazing number we had, so I'm not trying to diminish it all, but we didn't quite have as, as many. So if we have this reduction from 15 to 8, are we, is it actually like re-scoping it to like what we see as what is going to be the actual?
So it's really, it's really, you know, so with your example, we projected, uh, the number of students that we were hoping to serve, uh, last year, when we looked at the actual, uh, budget for who we actually were able to serve and what the final spend was. Uh, this is a reduction that allows us to, um, maintain, um, that, that level of support and summer programming without over-projecting like we did last year.
Which, I mean, in some ways it's, because it looks, looks bad on paper, but it actually means we're right sizing the budget to the, the students who were, which were a lot.
So it was an amazing catalog.
Yes.
Menu of opportunities available to families last summer. When you bring that down to what the actual was, uh, and you scale it down a bit to be strategic about a blend of academic and enrichment opportunities for, for students. We, we still think there, there's going to be substantive summer programming for, for students, certainly more than there's been in prior years.
Yeah, so that was one of my questions was about the summer programming, so we can skip to the next one. Um, I'm wondering, I have a couple of questions and then a comment. Um, the RESJ partnerships will, I imagine, be, um, impacted, uh, along with everything else. How, um, how do we see reduce, reductions in those contracts? That's one question. The second question is about the flex funds, the ESER, um, going to specific school buildings and they do need to be tied to school climate, but, um, are, are there any restrictions on those dollars? At all, or, I mean, are they very focused on addressing the specific needs within that community?
You, you're talking of the school improvement grants?
The school improvement grants, yes.
Yeah.
I'll start. I think, um, it's February 28th, so we're still, you know, getting a clear picture here. So even on the last topic of summer learning, uh, if the state comes through with additional monies for summer programming, that's going to help our situation, that allows us to look back at our list. We've, we've taken a lot of recommend and hard cuts across almost every strand of work. And everyone has to tighten their belt a notch or two, so there's not a, a strand of work or an area of investment where, uh, you know, we can keep them wholly protected. So, you know, that's true with all of our contracts, uh, including with our RESJ partners. So while we value all of our strands of work, as the budget picture gets a little clearer, we'll be able to see, you know, can we maintain at the current service level? Are we talking about a small haircut? Uh, or do monies come through where maybe we can expand in some other areas if other revenue comes through? So it, it's, it's a little premature, we understand. Uh, we just met with our partners yesterday for our second quarterly meeting, uh, you know, and, and continue to hear anecdotes from them and our school leaders around, you know, all the specific ways that they're contributing to supporting our students. So, you know, our, you know, our, our challenge is how do we maintain, uh, a, a balance of, of investment, you know, in all areas and still have a balanced budget to propose to, to our board. So it's a little early to say, so I don't want to out of the gate, um, uh, give a number per se, but, um, at this point right now, we know that there's going to have to probably be a, a bit of a scale down there in that area as well, but too early to tell.
I have another question about participatory budgeting whereby, um, public budgets, 1% or so is kind of decided, uh, with community members and that gives everybody a chance to weigh in on, you know, you're not spending enough here, you're not doing this there. It's basically giving everyone a virtual dollar and allowing the community to weigh in, in real time. Have we considered that as an exercise in terms of like bringing the budget conversations about where the district is falling short together with a vision for, you know, what could happen or what the trade-offs are? You know, I think, I, I think it would behoove the community to understand, you know, how difficult it is to spend a dollar when you've got the strands of work that are, that, that we do.
Yeah. We haven't done that to, uh, a district-wide scale, but I think this ESER improvement grant is kind of a perfect, you know, a, a small dose at, across eight schools. Because again, every school will get between 100 and 124,000. And one of the, the major asks of, of principals is to work with their school communities, specifically their site councils. And as you know, their site councils are made up of educators, princ- uh, staff, uh, parents, students, so that are, uh, cross, you know, example of the community, you know, and I, I imagine principals, and, and Dr. Proctor can probably speak to this, the principals are engaging the broader community about the use of these dollars.
It is a requirement, right? It's a requirement of, uh, the school improvement, uh, process, uh, that, that schools are, uh, engaging with, uh, school advisory councils or here in Portland, we call them the site council, um, in, in the, um, development of the budget plan for the school, which would include those dollars.
But for a lot of our schools, there just hasn't been a lot of discretionary dollars to have a conversation about. And now you have all these schools in the middle now have a six-figure fund to get into that kind of a dialogue with their school communities.
So I just, to put it out there, there is a nonprofit here in Portland called Participatory Budgeting Oregon. And, um, the workshops they've done in public have been, um, very well attended and they use a framework that is, guarantees that you're hearing from as many community members, abroad, uh, you know, representations.
Can I just, so I love this question. Um, I think.
Thank you.
I don't want to promise this, but I think I'm running the largest participatory budgeting program in the region right now at about $5 million. So it's, it's, I, I love you putting it out there. And I actually love the response because I had not made that connection, but these school improvement funds are participatory budgeting. They don't go quite to the.
It's larger than the Mentos, it's 8 million.
Of, of, oh!
Hey, sorry.
But no, but I, I think it doesn't go quite to the level of, of Vogue, but I imagine if the engagement is being done right, you know, you are engaging your entire school community. And one of the principles of participatory budgeting and, um, you know, Jim and I talk about this, right, is, is, is getting the geographic area small enough that it's meaningful.
Yes.
And I feel like in an education context, that is the school. Doing something broader than that gets really hard because I'm not going to vote for somebody at your school, I'm going to vote for somebody at my school.
Yeah, yeah.
But the school level actually does that. I had not made this connection, I think it's a great one. I think this is a.
And I hadn't considered the scale either, and I think that is important to do at the, at the building level.
Yeah.
And that's good that you're doing that, that work too.
Anything else, Director DePass?
Um, I think that's it for now.
Director Constant?
Thank you. Um, I want to go back to one thing Chief Del Godillo said. Uh, so when someone was asking a question about class size, Noelito, your response was, we don't, we still don't know and we don't know how buildings will choose to allocate their, um, their discretionary ESER funds. So that was, uh, interesting to me. So we're anticipating that, that, well, we're allowing schools to have the flexibility to use those to, uh, reduce class size and we're anticipating that that's how many of our schools might use them?
Well, it, it may not necessarily be to reduce class size, but they may acquire an FTE to support their activities in the school site as one of the options. But that's part of the, we're in progress right now, waiting to see what the, what the roll-up looks like. Early on, when we were, uh, having initial discussions about the 8 million in, in the school improvement grants, uh, the original hypothesis was thinking about how some schools may go straight to offset some of the, uh, allocation shifts that happened from aligning, uh, aligning, uh, class sizes to student enrollment. But to Dr. Proctor's point and, and, and Superintendent Guerrero around like there's some specific guidelines and expectations, how they're working with their school community, how are they putting their, their school improvement plan together? So we're, we're waiting to see, how does this all roll up? And what is that ultimately, how might that impact class sizes? We'll, we'll, we'll have more information in the next few, few weeks.
I, I was just curious about that because it is, actually flies in the face of the best practices, uh, that have been articulated around the use of those ESER funds and that we have repeatedly said that we were, uh, you know, taking pains to avoid, which is investing in unsustainable positions. So if people use them to reduce class sizes, that's not going to be available next year and that's not, you know, so I'm, I was curious to see if this might be a backdoor, uh, way to do that. And if so, that might be an unintended consequence of the benefits that we're really hoping to see from these funds. Do you, do you have a thought on that, Superintendent?
I, I do have lots of thoughts. I think we were really clear in our direction and guidance to our principals.
Yeah.
These were one-time monies and their intent is to provide intervention and support for focal students not meeting grade level expectations. So i- if it's going to be for any, we haven't received the full inventory of what those conversations or, or recommendations have been yet that we still have to sign off on centrally, uh, you know, but our, our hope is that if it is spent on personnel, it's going towards supporting students who are not at grade level and providing that intervention and support in most cases.
Yes, and, and the guidance of, again, is really around, um, you know, materials, resources, um, um, other non-personnel investments that will support the needs of the school. And we do, we are in conversation with HR as well, that if we do find that, um, it is something that lands in that way as an FTE, that there is a, a, a upfront, um, uh, you know, sign-off, if you will, but to say that we understand that this is a one-time, uh, position, grant-funded position.
Got it. Um, Director DePass asked a question I was going to ask around our, um, RESJ partnerships. Um, just being blunt, there's a lot of curiosity and concern in the community about, um, whether or not we're going to be able to maintain close to the level of partnerships we have here. So I'll be really interested to see, um, how that shakes out and, um, if we do end up seeing a lot of cuts there, uh, what, how, how we're looking at, um, meeting those needs in other ways, um, something that I'll be looking for in the budget. And then just my last question or comment, and, um, Superintendent, this is something I've expressed to you, but, you know, I, I think this is a time when we are going to need to start to have some conversations about pretty bold proposals in the budget and the kind of conversations that nobody ever likes to have, like around school consolidation. Um, because it's all, all arrows are pointing that way with our enrollment declines. And so, you know, I think it's safe to say we're not going to see any school consolidations in the, you know, implemented next year or with this budget implemented for the 23, 24 school year. But it, in my mind, that is, uh, something that we have a responsibility to look at for the following school year, which would have budget implications, um, in this budget in terms of beginning to, uh, start those processes and look at that. So, um, I, I think it would be irresponsible for us not to address that reality in some way in this budget. So as unpleasant as it is, I hope that, um, I hope we see a few big ideas about, um, just how we are going to transform ourselves, given, um, that we're, we're looking at serving fewer students. Because a little bit here and a little bit there, um, isn't going to make the difference. And we already have quite a few very small elementary schools, as we know, that are relatively inefficient to operate from a fiscal standpoint. They're lovely and their families tend to love them, they're charming and, you know, a nice warm school experience for kids because they're small, but they're inefficient. So, um, I'm looking for some, some big ideas like that, um, and the beginning of our board conversations there.
Thanks, Director Constant.
Just really quickly, as obviously we're in the beginning of our budget discussion and so are like a lot of our partners in the area, are we keeping in communication, like seeing what certain investments other, like Multnomah County is making? Because I know we were just at that meeting talking about like, okay, maybe if Multnomah County makes a bigger investment, say in their student health centers, then maybe we can divert those monetary resources that we have towards student health and divert those to other areas. And I guess just keeping an active communication and making sure we're monitoring what kind of investments are being made by our local partners so that we're not like doubling up. And obviously like, it would be great if we could double up, but if we're going to have to forego other things, then making sure that we're being strategic and keeping in mind the other supports that are in.
Yes, and I can assure you, we're always being proactive, uh, whether it's advocacy at the state level, uh, philanthropically, uh, and I think you're raising a good point of an example. We're not being spectators to see what the county decides to do. I'm going to invite Danny to speak to, but, you know, we were just having this conversation earlier around, we do have other entities and agencies around us who, you know, we have a lot of overlap, but if there's opportunity there, maybe that's the way we maintain level or expand. Want to say a little more?
Sure, so we, um, we've grown our partners primarily because they've been county-funded and city-funded, so this year we went from like 18 to 25, um, RESJ partners and that basically came from partners who were, as you said, a little late today, Sato from Multnomah County. Sato from, that was funded by a combination of Multnomah County and the city of Portland to be able to serve four high schools. So we are trying to find ways to, you know, expand our reach by looking at other funding. We also are going to apply for funding through the Oregon Department of Education to support some of our culturally-specific student affinity groups. So we have a lot for those fully across middle schools. And then I think there's always a great opportunity for symbiosis and collaboration with the county around SUN. And sort of like, how do we, how do we sort of utilize, and I think we do utilize, so our partners who are providing those wraparound services to our high school students, like SEI and ERCO and STEPUP, are pulling from county's anti-poverty efforts. So rent assistance, energy assistance, basic needs, the food pantries. That's all sort of going into, you know, into our, basically our students and families, sort of, you know, resources that are available. And I think that there's still continued opportunity to look to our partners in philanthropy. Right now, with OCF and Meyer in pretty big transitional periods right now, I think we've kind of, kind of sat back a little bit. But we do convene our funder partners once a quarter as well. And we talk to them about sort of like, this is what we're doing for summer, this is what we're doing during the school year. How can we take our dollar and make that stretch a little bit further? So we are trying to do that. I think we've talked about this in the policy, no, in the Intergovernmental Committee, oh, so sorry. But the opportunity to kind of like weigh in on the county's budget process going into the SUN redesign, the master proposals in the fall, where we do want to create some more alignment, really be able to sort of stretch the dollar instead of compound the dollar.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things as we wrap up, that we got to do our consent agenda, and I have one more thing to talk about. If you have an answer to this today, that's great. If not, but I think we need to be able to answer to the community. Why will it be a problem if our ending fund balance went to twenty million dollars?
So first thing that comes to mind is, we're talking like-
Like everyone says.
Like very zen. So the first thing that comes to mind is cash flow. So thinking about the method in which we receive funding, it's, we don't receive funding like we receive our paychecks, where we know we can count on it every set frequency intervals. So we receive a bulk of funding towards the beginning of the year. Then we receive a lot more funding through our property taxes. When I say beginning of the year, I'm talking about like July, August, and then December. So there's just this time period where we need to be able to pay our bills. So we need to keep our reserve at a high enough level to meet our thirty, forty million dollars a month payroll. And then, so that's the first issue. The second one is also then the broader context when it comes to our bond ratings. So a lot of people don't necessarily, that's not, may not necessarily be the first thing that comes to mind. But we have, like, big bond projects and we have big plans. And the rating agencies who essentially give us a grade based on how we're managing our funding, how much of our fund balance do we have, or we have the Biden buyer policies, play a role in the grade they give us, which subsequently impacts property tax values, which would impact how much funding we can get. It creates all sorts of issues where we don't want to get to a bad rating. And no one would want to borrow from us, which would then complicate potential future bond issuances. So those are the two big ones that come to mind.
And I, and I think it would be great to actually get those into bullet points. Because, you know, there's always a lot of pressure. And I want to say, one of, one of the reasons I actually don't love the savings account analogy. I like, prefer checking account analogy. Because the reality is that if you don't have any money in your checking account at the end of the month, you will start going through eviction proceedings, and you won't be able to buy food. And it's pretty, it's pretty dire. And they turn off the utilities. And so, I mean, I think that, that you mentioned the cash flow hugely important, you know, bond rating and fiscal responsibility hugely important. If that any fund balance goes to zero, and, you know, I saw one of these numbers, like, you know, if things not change, like, there's actually no provision for that in our state. It's, I think people sometimes think like, oh, well, if that happened, then the state would, no! There's no one, the district shuts down. We send kids home, no one gets paid, literally no one gets paid. We can't even pay people to pay people, right? To like figure that out. So, so, and people go to budget jail. So I mean, it's, it's, it's really, it's not like, it's not like it just sort of like, oh, if it happens, there's ways to deal with it. There's not.
Right, yeah.
And, and so I just-
It's existential thought exercise.
And I think though, to the average person, you're like, oh, you, you know, twenty million dollars is a huge amount of money. Why can't, why can't we, why can't we spend down to that amount? And the other thing I want to say is, I think, and I loved what you did earlier in the slides of noting, we spent fifty million dollars in that, I think that's the right number, over the current year.
Yeah.
We talked about it, and we're very clear with the community, this is to preserve positions that we will not be able to preserve going forward. And now that's, that's going to be true. Okay, great. Turning back to the board, when's our next board session on budget?
Uh, the fourteen, March fourteen.
Okay, March fourteen. So I just, I think the board just be thinking about what, what do you need, what will need to prep for the receipt of the, of the, I was going to say mayor's, superintendent's proposed budget. What do we need to prep for that, that will allow us to get to the approved budget? Which, does anyone remember the date of the approved budget?
April twenty-fifth.
Because again, and I know-
Or some, excuse me, approve would be May, it's in mid-May versus-
That's right, that's right. Proposed budget is April twenty-fifth, and then approved budget is a few weeks later. So the budget process has started. And so, you know, again, that timeline is always a little short between proposed and approved. It is for everybody, it is intentionally under Oregon law, relatively short. So, so we need to be asking the questions that we asked today, which are great, getting those answers, and then really being prepared so that when we get your proposed budget on the twenty-fifth, it's a sprint over like roughly three or four weeks to get to our approved budget and then a little bit more time to get to the budget. So just be thinking about those questions as they come in, shoot them over to the superintendent. You don't need to wait for one of these work sessions to make sure that we're preparing for that. And then the last thing I will say-
Andrew, can I ask, are we actually going to get, I think last year we got the physical budget, you know, like my neighbor. Do we get it, like, a week in advance? So before the presentation, so that we can actually-
We do want to get it at least a week in advance. Yeah, last year, it was about half the team. I, you know, have hired, been successful in bringing folks on board.
And we're still not fully-
And we're still not fully staffed. And we're training folks, so it's, it's been entertaining. But nonetheless, the goal is to get it a week in advance so that you have, like, a printed material markup, follow-up questions as we work towards April twenty-fifth. We don't want April twenty-fifth to be the first time to see.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then just from board questions from tonight, very specifically, and again, this is an opportunity. You know, the superintendent is putting together a proposed budget. But, but I wanted to make sure everyone had seen Slide seventeen, which are classroom thresholds. They're in the appendix section of your materials tonight. But these are the classroom thresholds the superintendent is using as he, as he puts together his proposed budget.
And staffing process that's underway.
And the staffing process is underway. But as we've always talked about, right? I mean, there is this, we understand that the need to get those staffing allocations out to schools happen early in the spring. We still approve a budget, and I guess I'm just, to the extent that board members, if anyone is uncomfortable with these, with these classroom thresholds tonight, it's a good time to raise that or very, very, very soon. Because again, the-
You could have the potential of throwing a wrench in everything.
Yeah. We'd want to know that already.
And they're the same, yeah, and they're the same thresholds as this current year. So there's the same staffing plan at this.
And that's, I guess, the, yes. And you did, you did let us know this. I mean, months ago when we had the year session and others, I'm just, I'm reminding the board, you know, technically, when we approve a budget, you could change those, it would be very chaotic at that point. So, I mean, now's the time. So if four members of the board said tonight, we're not comfortable with thirty-three for fifth grade, again, it's pretty late, but I would rather give that direction to the superintendent tonight than on April twenty-fifth or on May, you know.
Yeah, I guess I'm, and I'm not saying that I got a concern, but I guess one of the things that's different from this year from last year is there are the ESSR funds, which sounds like school communities are coming together, make some decisions that hopefully, you know, I think some discretionary dollars could, at least a lot of the school communities I've talked to is like, yeah, like, we think we're going to make things, like, be able to work out. So to me, that, we still, it's still not set. So I guess I just like, asterisk, it seems like it's out of my track. The schools are going to be, I think, in a, in a better place and not some of these, like, hey, we've got a class, you know, of twenty-five and then another one of thirty-three and, you know, people feeling more pain. So that would be one thing. And then I guess the other thing, I just, I want to be able to see, get the answer from Dr. Adams on this, again, this equity issue about the DLI and open schools and how they're getting staffed in which neighborhoods it is. So it's not a concern, I guess I'm just-
But, but, yes, I do just want to, and I, I think I heard this, but, you know, they also have the class size ranges in here. I mean, the community, I could tell last year during our budget process, didn't fully understand. We don't set class sizes per school. We don't go in and say, you know, Humboldt, you have a class size of twenty-five, and Abernathy has twenty-eight, and you have thirty. We say the maximum class for these grades or these numbers. And then it depends on who lives in that catchment area, what those class sizes. So this slide is really helpful because it says, say, for instance, in fourth grade, you know, the maximum class size at a non-title-one or CSI school is thirty-three. But the class size range is seventeen to thirty-three. So we will have schools that are at seventeen students in fourth grade not do, that's not a conscious, and I, you're asking a question separate about focus option. So even said, and those aside, just regular schools, that's not a decision we've made as a district, it's a decision individuals have made in terms of where they live.
Yeah, it's, I guess, one of the things is, I think, of like the ripple effect. So say you're in one of those, like, third grade classes at the maximum. And then, because the next year, if you don't lose any students, you're, you're gonna, you sometimes have a cohort of students who have this sort of year after year of higher sizes. And it's just a function because you're, you guys, that's how any of our schools work.
And at Llewellyn, my, just my own lived experiences, we had, like, first grade was thirty-one in a class and third grade was thirty-two in a class. And so, very similar. And then it's up to the principal as the instructive school leader, we have one extra staff that we have funding for. So do you put it with the first graders? Because they're new to school and they might need extra support as they're learning. Or do you put it with the third graders? Because that's a crucial reading year and their bodies are bigger. And, and, you know, those kind of decisions of which class did you make the much smaller class? And that's, you know, that's up to the instructional leader to decide what's best for their school. And of course, parents in the third grade and parents in the first grade both had really strong opinions about where they wanted that teacher. But that, that also ends up being, and I would just say, I don't, I mean, I don't love thirty-three for any of our kids. And I realize that because of our budget realities, this is where we are. And that it's challenging.
I know that this is particularly for the community. We've shared with board and shared transparently sort of our heat map of what those, what those sizes actually land at across district. We've made a concerted effort to make sure, you've seen the red disappear, the yellow disappear. I think for the first time, we had just about everybody in green within range. And we also want to make sure we have a balance of investments and resources. Class sizes matter, but we also need to be able to support our teachers, and we need to raise structural capacity. We need to focus on leadership development, we need to do professional development, we need to have our partners, we need to. So, you know, we have to have a sound and comprehensive plan to get the kinds of outcomes that-
CDS.
And-
Class sizes is one of many inputs that makes a difference for students, but one of many.
Okay, and then I'm going to, I'm going to move on to the second sort of policy-related question. We did ask a lot of questions about Online Learning Academy today. And I just, I just want to do a little bit of a, of a check-in with the board. There's a majority that is interested in keeping Online Learning Academy. The superintendent needs to know that today as he crafts his proposed budget. So again, we're not making a decision here today, but this is an opportunity for us to provide feedback and interaction. So I, I will say, I ask my questions because I actually think it's the right move. It's unfortunate, I want to make sure those kids and those families are supported, but I think it makes sense. But I just, I want to do that check-in.
I agree with Director Scott. I know that, you know, we've got, like you said, a lot of complaints or stories for family. But the cost benefit and the services that are available at their places, it makes the most sense to sort of end that as those ESSR dollars went.
How many, how many students have been placed in PPS, like voluntarily have chosen to go back into PPS?
But you're still working that process and we don't have the answer for that right now.
I'd kind of like to know that, is it five percent or is it, hey, we got eighty percent there? And like, now we're down to a much smaller number.
Do you have an idea of a trend that, you know, if you've made ten calls? Is it just not-
It's hard to say, no, it's a reason that I would just posit. One is that we're in the midst of the elementary lottery right now, it's open, right? And so this is part of when school is, you know, we'd be having this conversation with elementary grade students anyway, right? Like working on it. So that will close in March, mid-March. So that, so that's part of the flux. I would, not knowing, I'd sort of where people are landing. And then the other piece is, you know, we're, I think that we are, so we have these two meetings tomorrow, which I think will be helpful. We're doing individual calls, then we're going to do some, you know, looking at the information that we gather. We just, we have been doing outreach and it's just been, we have not gotten to the point where we've been able to have a meeting, a formal meeting with families. We had, last Wednesday was scheduled and it was, you know. I think that we'll know more in the coming weeks, it's just, it's, it's too early to really say definitively right now.
All right, I want to move on to our consent agenda. Did any of you have any other final things?
Say so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As far as OLA, right? I, I wish we could look at a step-down model, just for that transition piece. Look at conversations that we had yesterday, I don't remember yesterday, about mental health, you know, and for kids who are usually not becoming self. It would be great if we could have one. I understand if you can't, kind of some kind of step-down model for those kids. Or additional support for those kids, you know, when they come into a, in class, in school learning. I would just, I would love to look at a step-down model. But I'll go with the majority of the four.
Michelle and Amy.
I personally can't justify a cost per student, the twenty thousand dollars per student. And I know it's a really tough decision. I say that as someone that benefited from attending an alternative school in high school. So, yeah, I would not be in favor of keeping the school open, given, given the circumstances, given the budget that we're looking at, given where those other resources could be, be put.
I agree, I'm not in favor of shifting those costs to the general fund, although I have, you know, I do feel strongly that we should look at some of the really successful strategies there, especially for our high school kids and the very flexible platform that is used in OLA for our high school kids. Because there's some really incredible teachers and some wonderful work that's going on there. And I would like to see us integrated as much as we can into our other programs and schools.
Thank you for the budget presentation. This is very helpful, and I know that's more conversations. Okay, the board is now going to vote on the consent agenda. Mr. Ratcher, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
And board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda for tonight? Great, do I have a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Lowry moves.
Vice Chair Holland seconds. Any board discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution six-six-four-eight through six-six-five-four. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Representative McVeigh.
Yes.
Any extensions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McVeigh voting yes. And before we adjourn into executive session, really quickly, I want to have a conversation. I don't want it to go on a very long time. I'm, I wanted to talk a little bit about how we as a board react to potential behavior in our board sessions, or board sessions for that matter. Last week, we had our safety and security session. At the very end of that session, we had a member of the audience who also happened to be a PPS employee decide he was going to speak, even though there was no time for that. You know, we let him know that that was not in order to speak. He raised his voice and insisted on speaking. I tried to turn it over to the superintendent, who understandably was not going to shout down, you know. So, and I did end up, and I've just been reflecting a lot on that moment. Because I did end up really essentially raising my voice and talking over this person in order to, to sort of, you know, continue with our meeting and finish up. I don't, I don't like that. I think we've actually been extremely fortunate as a district. And when you read about what's happening out there, I mean, we occasionally have people, you know, shout and say little things. But I mean, for the most part, our, the audience has been really well behaved.
We only had to evacuate the board room once.
We only had to evacuate once. But, but that's not guaranteed. And as I was reflecting on that- And as I was reflecting on that moment, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, it's, 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 um, you know, it could happen at any time. How we react to that, I, I wanted to have a quick board conversation about that because I, I want to make sure we're kind of on the same page. So there's no decision meeting today, um, but I just wanted to get a little bit of feedback while we were in, while we were all here together. For me, there's really two, two, two approaches. One is, is essentially to do what we did in that meeting, which is to kind of, to kind of shout the person down. I don't like that because I think it contributes to the behavior, right? And it, and it, and it actually encourages more of that behavior. If we don't say anything, we're also giving in to that behavior because someone who is going to have their say, if we are just sitting there quietly, then they are in fact getting their say. And I worry that also encourages more people to say, oh, well, that actually worked. And so if I just stand up and say, I'm going to start, you know, telling them what I think and they're going to listen to me. And I think the only solution I could come up with is that we adjourn and leave. Which, you know, but is also, that is disruptive to our meeting, but it, that also takes away the, the stage. And so in my mind, instead of, you know, I mean, I'm perfectly happy telling someone, this is not a time for testimony. This is out of order. Um, this is, you know, please, please, you know, please, please stop. But I think at that point, if they refuse to stop, my preference as the chair would be to just gavel us into, to recess and then have the board leave the boardroom. We could try that and, and do that once or twice. If, if people continue being disruptive, then I would say we adjourn to a different room. And, and have a board meeting without the public there, which is absolutely the last um resort. I don't, I don't like that. And, and I think it takes away from the 99% in the audience who are there. But I also don't know how else to sort of respond, but I really wanted to get all of your thoughts because I don't want to do anything as a board that y'all don't support.
I wasn't in person when the meeting happened where you had to go into recess because people were like screaming obscenities at you. I was here for the crowd board one with about COVID vaccines, but this was a different one. This was about the budget last year. And I think what happened then is you called a recess. The temperature in the room got lowered. And then the, so I like that. I like that idea of going into recess because it does become really fraught and um.
We took a five minute break that was about 15 minutes.
Right.
And everybody mingled and socialized.
From my perspective, the camera just went off and I'm like, hey! Don't know what's happening, but, and then it came back on and it was okay. So what was that like for you as chair? Because I know that was, I mean, being online, it was really tense. I can't imagine what that was like in your seat.
Yeah, I feel like I was in training for that for a long time, that moment. And so um just like literally expressing what the expectation is. And it's like when you're trying to train a puppy and they jump on you, you turn your back. And so I think bringing the mood down without, you know, you don't want to get into a shouting match. It's not effective. And yeah, um, really, they're filing out if, if it gets bad or um making the expectation known right in the moment. And we'll just, you know, we just recess.
I think that's the right answer, but again, just from what I experienced.
That's just me.
Yeah.
Last two chairs, um, Vice Chair Holland.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's go back to the whole safety piece again, right? You know, if he's able to do something, we don't have any security or somebody to, you know, correct that and maybe escort him out or something. Then, you know, it's no stopping anyone from doing it again. And I, and I have an issue with that. And I've talked about this before, you know, somebody want to come do something. Are you just sitting here and sitting ducks? You know, and then if something do happen, then of course then we start figuring out, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Then it'll really be reactive, but if we don't have any protocols to where we can have our security escort someone out, we're doing that out of order. Then, you know, just recess them five minutes, coming back, recess them five minutes, coming back or, you know, during the meeting. I think this plays in to what they might have wanted at that time. So until we really get serious about our security stuff.
And we'll say the city of Portland faced 10 years ago some extreme behavior and did have armed, you know, uh, security. And, and it actually, it, it got worse, uh, just to be clear.
I said armed, but we got.
Well, no, I mean, armed or not, but I'm saying security that when they started escorting people out, then it became like a sit-in protest. Like I'm going to collapse on the floor. You're going to have to drag me out. Cameras came out. I mean, the news came out. So I'm just saying that even that can, can really escalate the situation.
That was last week.
I think one of the most effective things is denying the platform, which is what we can do if, 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 you know, if we end up not coming back. But I also, I also hate, I hate one person being able to drive that.
And so um, I think it's setting expectations in the beginning of the meeting. So now that we know what to expect. And I mean, a slightly different perspective of last week is we're in a work session, which isn't our normal um board meeting um setting. And at one point, somebody in the background, the student rep said, um, not the student rep, but the, one of the, somebody from the district student council said something. Then like Roger chimed in on something, you know, it was useful, it was interesting. And then.
I didn't hear Roger chime in.
He, he did. He, I forget what he.
And also that was my fault because I sort of invited the partner to this.
So, uh, well, can I, I'll just, let me finish, um, if you don't mind. And so then when it got to something a little bit that was like more aggressive, it was like, oh, we can't have that. And I mean, my, to me, I didn't think that was physically threatening or like some sort of security, which is very different. I mean, that's when I gavel the meeting. But I would like try and set expectations when we have a work session, like this is informal, it's just for the people at the horseshoe unless you're actually invited up to the table. So maybe that's the thing. It's like, it's tempting to say, hey, like give us your opinion. But maybe it's like inviting them up to the, if that's what you want to do, invite them to the table. So it's not just, people can randomly invite other people into the conversation. Because I think that way, that people will, will fit their norms because they live by the norms of, oh, I can speak if I'm coming up to the, if I've been invited, you know, by the chair or by the chair up to, up to the, the table versus. And then we have to, even if we like what somebody's saying from back there, we have to like enforce that. So it's not just, you can comment if, if it's innocuous.
What do you think about a board meeting context?
In a board meeting context, um, I, I think, I mean, generally depends on what happens in the meeting. Again, public comment, it's like, sometimes we don't like what people say and it's harder than not to interrupt them, like when their time's up. But not, not to have any sort of content filter. It's just like, everybody gets the same thing. Like when you're done, you're done. With, with few exceptions, but there's, there are some exceptions that you might have, but otherwise, you know, in, in things. And then when it's in the middle of a meeting about something else, when it's clearly out of control or it feels physically threatening, instead of getting up and walking out, I do think the best thing is chair calling for a recess. So we're not leaving, they, they, because the objective may be to shut us down. So we're not leaving. We're just, you know, letting the situation being taken care of and then you can come back. And when you come back, Ethan, I think, which I think you did, you said like, here are the, here are, like, we're going to start again. Here are the rules. Um, but I think almost ending the meeting, especially if it's not over yet, in some ways, um, doesn't allow us to do our business.
And I'm just.
Well, so when, when we had to be recessed and go down in the basement, they still.
That was a safety issue with the math.
Yeah, that was, people were stomping on the ceiling.
I want to make sure I understand that would be, you, you would actually stay, you would recess the meeting, but stay at the dais. And I'm, I'm just curious if that encourages, because again, their goal is to say something to us. And if we sit there and listen, does that encourage then 10 or 20 people saying, oh, great, I'm going to now testify even though there's no testimony?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess part of it is also from like viewing audience. So it's like, just like the, my feed is.
Well, it sounds like they turned the light.
Is, is, yeah, it's recessed there, then. And there's, there's no mic. Um, I think that's it, I'd say. It's different if, if that there is a perceived physical threat, which I think getting out of the room. But if it's somebody being disruptive, but not.
But if the meeting's recessed, then those of us who want to get up can leave. And if anyone wants to stay and listen, they can, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. Director Cronstein?
I, I think physical threat is not a threshold because it's very subjective. It's very different for men and women uh as well. I, I sort of agree that I, I would uh only want to leave the space where we're trying to do our work as a last resort. Because that's giving a lot of power to people who are trying to, you know, subvert the work we're trying to do. So, but I appreciate your bringing this up and um I appreciate uh doing everything we can to not normalize that kind of incivility.
Byron, did you have some?
Yeah, I think honestly, like what you said about, you seem very resilient, but I definitely didn't, wouldn't want to put you in a position where you're always having to shout down the person. I think adjourning the meeting, or not adjourning, but recessing the meeting sounds like a good plan to me. And then having the ability to get up and to move around and to kind of diffuse the situation. I also think that more than anything, I think there's pros and cons with every protocol, like no matter what we do. So I think the bigger thing that I have is really just consistency in what we decide to do. So it's like, and it is tricky, like I run the district student council. I personally am not very good at like maintaining those, you know, the standards depending on the topic, and that's really hard. But I think making sure we're cutting everyone off at three minutes, no matter what they're discussing, whether unfortunately, whether they're discussing something we don't like and whether, you know, they're sharing a personal story. The only way that we can kind of be in the clear of running into issues around public comment is if we treat every single person, no matter what they're saying, the same. And unfortunately, the same thing goes for, I mean, we think to way couple meetings back, but like at Jefferson, we just started inviting people up to talk about it. And the thing is, that is such a great thing. And in that moment, I really do think it was the right decision. But it's things like that, like we cannot do anything ad, like ad hoc or, you know, without back, backup from our policy if we're going to stay on the right side of maintaining our protocols. And it just does require those really difficult trade offs in the moments where you really want people to be able to speak up. And I also think another thing is if people are shouting in that manner because they don't feel like they've had the opportunity to be heard. So I think per obviously going into recess, but also offering that individual, like if you would like to come and talk in during public testimony, or if you would like to write your comments into the board, we would like to hear you and making that communication clear with that individual who did cause the upset, but saying that we have protocols that we maintain no matter what, and this is our track record of doing so. And that if you, we want you to be heard, but you need to do that in the ways that we provide so that it's fair for everyone. And I think it's just staying consistent and actively communicating with people who do make a ruckus. Because I guess this is definitely like more optimistic, but I like to think that the people that do stand up like that teacher, it's more out of passion rather than anger or specific like, you know, really trying to mess up our meeting. And I think it is just that passion and the want to be heard. And so I think making sure that even if sometimes it is like, well, you just messed up our meeting, like we shouldn't really be giving you the space, certainly, maybe not in that moment. But making sure that they know there's always the opportunity and that the door stays open. And also us, unfortunately, as the board, just being the bigger person in a lot of those moments. And the fact that we are here to serve the public and as much as we hope that the public will always maintain our protocols, that we're also having some grace and understanding around those things, but just like keeping that consistent.
I want to talk about our board protocols though, because we are changing, you know, suggesting that it has to be related to an agenda item. And I completely agree. You'd be surprised how many.
I just, sorry, I don't.
It'd be different.
But I, I just want to make sure because that, that's going to be an agenda item next Tuesday.
Yes, it will, but.
We don't talk about it tonight because it hasn't been noticed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so, so that, that might change like how, how we listen, right? And, and I, and I agree with you that people um do very, very well by being acknowledged, being heard. I mean, it can really.
So we'll have some space to, to talk about overall comments and, and go ahead.
I, I also, last week, uh, when we were in the complaint hearing, some stuff happened. And one of the things I experienced when I was chair is that we don't do a very good job of supporting each other as a board. When we do have someone who starts calling names or is heated or passionate and sometimes goes after the chair, the rest of the board doesn't always step in or intervene or speak up. And we don't want it to become like the whole board shouting at one person. It can feel really challenging as chair when someone's going after you personally. And so I wonder how we might as a board um do a better job of saying, it's not just on the chair to say, hey, okay, that's not, that's not our, like, that's not okay right now, but how do we like stand together and do that well?
I am like, there, it's fine. So what I'm hearing, this is, this is, this is really helpful. I mean, what I'm hearing.
My trauma when I was chair.
What I'm hearing, I just want to make sure, I, what I'm hearing is that to these, and again, hopefully it's never happened, right? Hopefully it's a perfectly fine board meeting. To the extent though, any future meeting, if, if someone is shouting, um, we'll recess, but we'll stay there. But when we recess, Terry, I assume you'll, you know, kind of immediately turn off the, the feed. And then again, we'll try and reset expectations. Hopefully that will work. Okay, that, that works. One thing I just, you brought up, I want to make sure. Generally on public testimony, I wait for the alarm to go off. And then I give people 20 to 30 seconds, which most of them seem okay with. Every once in a while, someone goes more like the 45 seconds, but we haven't had anyone for a while go to that, like, I'm just going to keep talking. And I have had to cut those people off. I know Gary, man, I watch you in committee meetings and you're like, three minutes, done, three minutes. I don't do that. I, I mean, honestly, the, the reason why I don't is because I feel like for your average person trying to give testimony, they really are trying to finish in three minutes. They get to three minutes, they have two more sentences, takes them to 3:30 and I feel like that's okay. But I guess I just want to make sure the board's okay with that because if y'all want me to start.
Laura, are we going to have this conversation next week though?
Well, that's.
Because to me, that's.
The government, the conversation we're having on Tuesday is about content and what people say. This is very specifically about like the, the, the three minute deadline.
I think the 20 seconds, 30 seconds is just a slippery slope, like, and I think that it is, I totally agree with you. I think especially at public board meetings, people are really nervous, you know, like they come down and maybe when the timer starts, sometimes they mess up, like putting in their names, saying their things. So like, but I think that anytime that we don't keep perfectly consistent, I think it just causes issues.
So three, I just want to make sure, three minute cutoff, three minute cutoff.
No, because I remember when I was chair, we had all these darling little children from some fifth grade class read their presentations on climate change, right? And I knew if I interrupted the kiddo in the middle of their testimony, they weren't going to be able to adjust.
Okay, so kids can't talk about.
Let me finish my story. So the kids went over. Then there was an adult, there was an adult who was giving testimony and she went over and I said, you know, please wrap up. And she kept going and she, then she started yelling about how I gave the kids more time, which I did because I know that a fifth grader can't hear. Could you please wrap up?
It's not unlike our teacher who yelled that we let a student speak, but we didn't.
Right, so that gets, because I'm not, I don't.
Okay, I'm hearing a little divergence.
So.
Three minute or a little leeway?
I'm at like two minutes. If you, if we want to get, I mean, I'm at two minutes. And like finish your sentence, not finish your testimony.
Wait, two minutes?
Well, I'm.
Yeah, which is, I'm sure. We can talk about that next Tuesday. I'm thinking about our.
Right, well, I would, I, I'm always of a finish your sentence, which just seems polite, but not finish your paragraph or finish your testimony because it could be. And I, and I will say, there are moments when you just know it's the right time to let somebody go, like some go over.
But that's when we get in trouble.
Well.
Because, and then I would, because honestly, we've had some extremely compelling testimony, but I can tell like, man, if I cut this person off, y'all are going to be mad at me. But if we, if, if we're going to cut people off at three minutes, we have to do it for everybody. They could be in the middle of.
I don't think you have to do it for everybody. I think it just, you have to have a judge.
The second that we let. We decide, so that's when things get messed up.
I don't even have to, I'm not saying you give someone else like 10 minutes. I'm just saying that you have, you gotta be giving some folk, like if you got, in my culture, you got an older speaking, you're not going to do like, no, uh, somebody, you gotta, you gotta be done talking. So I think you can get some grace with that.
We also.
Based on age and ability.
We also, we also have a protocol that says.
Not based on age.
We also have a protocol that says we'll listen to voices that we don't always hear and underrepresented voices. And I do think sometimes there are things that we need to listen to that shouldn't just be cut off. And they don't.
That's obviously why I, I let it, I usually let it go 20 or 30 seconds. But again, I try and do that as consistently as I can.
I, I think that kind of, uh, if you want something other than a harsh three minute cutoff, I think having a range that's generally consistent is the best path. You have discretion to give another 20 or 30 seconds. It's not based on content. It's in the chair's discretion, given that someone needs to finish a thought. Maybe they started late. Maybe they spoke more slowly than the next person. Maybe they had an interpreter. And you get some of that piece, but it, it, it can't be based on age. It can't be based strictly on content. It can't. But I think articulating that the generally applicable rule is that it's three minutes and you have, the chair has a little discretion so someone can wrap up.
You've been doing a great job, Eddie.
Yeah, you've been doing.
So what a big year. You could have said 10 minutes.
We have a cultural thing where you absolutely just don't interrupt certain people based on their status.
No, I, I.
All right. Okay. Sorry, I want to get to our next, our next executive session. All right, we're adjourned. We're going to go to executive session. Are we doing that in the other room? All right, we're adjourned. We're going to go to executive session. Are we doing that in the other room?